Call to order the record scheduled meeting, Paintsville City Council, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Can clerk call the roll, please?
Bill, Mike.
Here.
Tommy. David.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Sean.
Press it.
Any additions or corrections to the special call meeting of February seventeenth in the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions or comments concerning departmental reports? All in favor?
I vote no again on that.
Opposed? Jim votes?
I vote no also.
Y'all want it?
A libration or?
Favorit?
No, no libration, just...
Have a motion to pay the bills, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, I vote yes, with, as the bill's as presented.
Opposed?
So you mean funds as presented, as money comes?
Oh, as presented here in this act.
That's all we think about.
That's all I'm saying, is just approving what's in.
I know, your insinuation is that we're gonna sneak and do something, Jim, that you not tell your buddies and, and, I'm a crook and all that sort of thing, so, so you can take your insinuations and you can, you know what you can do with them, as far as I'm concerned, but, and that's for you too, Sarah. But...
So did, do I need to make a motion again?
No, I think we got a motion.
I just wanna know who voted.
We voted no.
Those two voted no.
Vote, you all voted, okay, that's fine.
Couple of announcements. First of all, I got a letter today that I was very impressed to receive from the Small Business Administration, and it was the announcement of a statewide award from one of our local, for one of our local businesses. Ms. Desiree Sloan-Harmon of Club Fit Studios in Paintsville has won the Kentucky Woman Own Small Business of the Year.
Good!
Congratulations, Desiree. There'll be, there'll be some other things about that a little later on, but, uh, I was, I was excited about that and wanted to mention it tonight, I'd just gotten that today. The other thing that I'd like to do at this time is, I'd like to introduce Mr. Frankie Spencer, who, who just wants to take a minute to tell us about, he's Public Relations Director for Addiction Recovery Care, and, uh, give us just a brief bit about your program.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, thank you, Jeff. Just real quick, my name is Frankie Spencer. I've been working as a Certified Alcohol and Drug Counselor for the past thirteen years. I'm now working for a company called Addiction Recovery Care, you have the brochures and pamphlets there. I know we're kinda short on time, I usually do this about an hour and a half, but I'll take it down to about five minutes, if that's okay. I'm just kidding, an hour and a half. But anyway, I am here today just to let you know about, and awareness, it's informational about what we do here at Addiction Recovery Care. We have four residential programs, you have them in the pamphlets and brochures there. The closest one you may know is Karen's Place. They do a lot of, they have their church choir that goes out to scenes of different churches and different organizations. The other two programs, the other three programs, one's in Best Blessing, it's the other female facility, it's in Anvil, Kentucky. And we have two residential men's programs, one's in Flinning County, just north of Warhead, and the other one's in Somerset. Uh, we have fourteen outpatient programs, including the one we have here on Broadway. Uh, we do have an office here, employs three employees here. Uh, we do, with that, as do the counseling for meditation assisted treatment, and I like to say that we just do the counseling, we do not do the Suboxone prescribing. Uh, there was policies made several years ago that if you get Suboxone, it's not cash anymore, and it's, if you do insurance, you do have to have counseling. What we do with our counseling, we are a faith-based, what I like to call God-led, God-driven program. And what that means, we don't push religion, we don't push our faith on anyone, but we sure do try to introduce people to God and their understanding. And with our program, it's a Christ-centered program. Uh, we don't push it on anyone, but like I said, we do, I've been doing this for a long time, without that spirituality component, a lot of people cannot get off drugs or alcohol. I understand this community, just reading the newspaper, there was a lot of busts just last week for drugs. This is a pro, this is a problem that's widespread, and it's not just in Paintsville or Johnson County, it's all over the state. Again, I go and around, and what my job is to do is come to city councils, come to fiscal courts, I just got away, got out of the school board meeting just then, just to let people know that there is help out there, and that's what we're here for. Uh, we do take all the insurances, private and Medicaid. Uh, I did have someone that was, oh, there she is, that was wanting to come and say a few words. Uh, reason why I do this, folks, it's not because of just, I do get paid for it, but the thing is, is that what I like to focus on, we do as a society, we focus on the problem, we focus on all the problems that we have out there, Hazmat, emergency services, police officers, things you all see, that's the problem. But what we do is try to focus on the solution, and the solution is people like Rebecca. Would you care to just share just a few minutes, if that's all right, with the council?
Couple minutes.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Um, most of my life has involved drugs in one way or another. Some of my earliest memories were a lot of other people using pizzledress. At fourteen, I started using, I've been addicted for, when, when did that begin? I'm thirty-six years old. I've been claimed for three years now. I've been going to Oxford about a year, they taught me, I've never been able to stand up here and talk to you all before, they, they taught me to come out of my shell to any more cough events, to be proud of myself. They taught me so many different claims, they taught me how to spot a relapse, how to, a lot of several helping skills that, ah, that have helped me come here. It's really a great program, I'll let you know, how those people...
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all why I do what I do, you know, because we, we do, you know, everybody's in here who's been touched or affected by drug addiction in some way, form or fashion. What we do is just, we, uh, try to let God do what we can't do for ourselves, so, and this is what it is, and that's what it's all about.
Do you have a place in Paintsville, I love Louisa and...
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a facility where they stay over?
No.
Not here, but you do have a...
Well, you have an outpatient program. Uh, real quick, if I don't sell it, tell this, my CEO will hang me up, but we are car-credited. What that means is, uh, it's pretty much one of the most highest accreditation you can get from the national government, federal government, God-led, God-driven program. And they give us not just one year, but they give us three years, 'cause they see what we're doing is a hell of a...
Now, where did you say your residential places work here in?
Louisa.
Louisa and Warhead?
I give you more brochures and pamphlets here in just a second, I know it's kind of messy.
Okay.
Louisa and Warhead?
Louisa, Wallingford, it's in Flinning County, just north of Warhead. Uh, we have one in Somerset and, and Anvil, which is in, up London.
This is a free service by the time you get there?
Uh, insurance-based, uh, but what we do, uh, we, we have taken grace clients, we're a missionary, mission-first programs.
No, you're not a government agency of any sort?
No, we're a private, uh, faith-based program.
Okay.
Well, thank you, and like I said, that's why I wanted to be here, 'cause, you know, a lot of times you hear of fly-by-night programs operating, I wanna be here to make sure that everybody knows that we're here for the right reasons, trying to help change lives like Rebecca. I can't say enough, that pays a lot of courage, so let's give her another round of applause.
Thank you, thank you, Frankie. Uh, first item of business is the, is a resolution, uh, for Paintsville Police Department, additional body armor. Virginia, can you explain that to us, please?
Sure. You may remember that several months ago, we got a grant for body armor, and we didn't spend all of those funds, but we got every officer at that time, um, a piece of body armor. And we have closed that grant out, but we have money left in there, so what they have asked me to do is just submit another application for the one officer who's came on since then that doesn't have body armor, and they're gonna award that for us, but we have to go back through the process. So this is just a resolution for that one piece of body armor, it doesn't cost you all any money at all, so...
So I make a motion to approve that?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second item of business is the discussion of abandoned properties, and certainly this is an item that's, that's been with us for some time, it's over the past few years, abandoned and dilapidated, I'll call them, properties around town that, uh, that we get complaints about, and rightfully so, from time to time, we've talked about it on many occasions. We have a Bridge Street citizen, uh, that has requested to come say a few words, and certainly we wanna provide him with that opportunity. Jim Daniels, can you come to us and, uh, tell us your story?
Well, I was told to be here, okay, I did request this. Uh, no, I did write on that, and I appreciate you for, I can do this, you're all not hitting up and leaving when you see me.
I was gonna give you a round of applause.
Uh, before I start, I do have some pictures that I'm gonna pass around, that you can look at, and while you're looking at these pictures, I will have a few words to say. Everybody seems in a hurry tonight, so I will do the best I can. Uh, I've lived on Bridge Street for five years. Keep our home as nice as we can, and I have a lot of neighbors that do the same, but just so that you know, we have five houses on our street that are dilapidated and ready to fall. Floors are on the ground, windows are falling out, and, uh, I didn't know if I had a leg to stand on, and I began to look up at the laws that we have already, in this city, have already passed, and things can be done, we really can. Uh, I had visitors come in from Florida last year, and I was actually ashamed of, of my street. I'm sorry to say that, that I was, and I told them, these people are gonna tear these houses down, we're gonna have a beautiful street. When I was a little boy, I worked with Jimmy Allen, you know Jimmy, I cut grass, until I found out he was making me work, and I bought my own lawn. But when I went home, I lived on State Street at the time, and I would walk down that Bridge Street or cross the Melville Bridge, and I thought that was one of the pretty streets in town, but that's no longer the case, okay? Uh, safety is the main thing. These houses are not safe at all. We have a lot of children on the street now, and, uh, I have got some things here that I wanna do very, very quickly. And, uh, the effects of vacant and abandoned property, uh, it is a public nuisance, okay? And that is against the law. And we do have laws already written, already done, here in Paintsville, to not force people to tear down, we can't make them do anything. I couldn't find a law that could make us do that, but I did find laws in place that were, the owners of these properties could be fined on a daily basis for every violation. And I'm not, I'm not trying to sound mean, I don't wanna hurt anyone, but our property values have gone down because of this. I have had to call the police twice for squatters living in the homes. Uh, they have found makeshift beds, cotton balls, which usually is used for, you know, drugs, uh, or whatever, but it, but it's a dangerous situation. Uh, we have open basements and open cellars that children can fall into. Uh, we have, uh, domestic animals living in these houses, we have every insect that you can imagine, every rodent. Uh, I'm not crazy about cats, but now I'm kinda glad we got some lawn cats on our street to take care of the mice that we have. Uh, termites is a problem in these houses, and, uh, when termites do so much damage, there is a possibility that the houses could absolutely collapse. One is right beside of, or, geez, don't mention her name, I'm going to... One right across from me, she has two actually, one on each side, and, uh, also Jesse, everybody knows Jesse, he's worked with the city for years, cuts the grass, and he's aided to them, doing good. Uh, these houses are dilapidated, ready to go up. If one catches on fire, my good neighbor Jesse, we would be lucky to get him out of his apartment, because this one house is probably ten feet from where he sleeps, okay? I want to read one thing here, and I promise you I will, I will sit down. Uh, under abandoned urban properties, and I read this under the Paintsville laws, okay? It says, "An abandoned urban property means any vacant structure, vacant or unimproved lot or partial ground in the city which has been vacant or unapproved for a period of at least one year, and these have been for many years." Number one, because it is dilapidated, they are unsanitary, they are unsafe, they are vermin-infested, they are, uh, otherwise dangerous to the safety of persons, which they are that, and unfit for instant use, for some reason. And this is a serious problem, not only on my street, but it's on every street.
It's all over the block.
It's all over the point.
Yeah.
And I, I'll be honest with you, I think it's time to clean up the city, and I think that we can, we can do this. Uh, this was passed, uh, it says, "By reason of neglect or lack of maintenance, has become a place for the accumulation of trash, which we have debris, or has become infested with rodents or other vermin." Uh, I have seen foxes come out from under these houses, opossums, raccoons, uh, all these things created, and you can't tell them that you're a kid to read a private property sign and to stay out of this. They can fall into some of these cellars and some of these basements and be seriously injured. I have, I myself have killed five copperheads since I did that, on my street, and I believe they're coming from these vacant houses. There's no doubt in my mind about that. Document number ninety-two point oh-two, and this is under Paintsville, I think it's out of the state. It says, "Common law and statutory nuisances, in addition to what is declared in this chapter to be a public nuisance, those offenses which are known to the common law and statute of Kentucky as public nuisances may be treated as such and be proceeded against as is provided in this chapter, which is one of our chapters, or in accordance with any other provision of law. It shall be unlawful for the owner, I'm gonna hush, occupant or person having control or management of any land within the city to permit a public nuisance to develop there on. The following conditions are declared to be public nuisances. This is, this is our, our item, dangerous trees, we have them, accumulation of rubbish, we have that, storage of explosives, I haven't found that, thank God. Uh, it even says weeds and grass, that's in there. Open wells or cellars, which we do have cellars, and we have some pits in the yards. Trees and shrubbery that obstructs, uh, obstructing streets. Keeping of animals not in pens or in yards, which they are animals there, as far as I'm concerned, the property owners may not be there, but they own those animals, because that's where they're living. Junk, scrap metal, vehicles that won't run. And document number ninety-two ninety-nine, it says, "Go Thursday, I was told that I didn't have a leg to stand on when I come over here. Nothing can be done." Well, people that told me that was wrong, and I found this, and I hope y'all take this serious. We can do something. Whosoever violates any provision of this chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be fined. It doesn't say maybe fined, it says shall be fined, not more than five hundred dollars for each offense. In other words, you can't take one house and say five hundred dollars a day, you can take that one house and look at ten to twelve violations they have, and it's five hundred dollars towards violation. I don't expect us to do that, and neither, and you know you're not gonna do that, but these people, and have letters sent to them and say, "You've got thirty days, and we will assess a fine." So we can clean up our city, and clean up our streets. Each day's continued violation shall constitute a separate offense. And I'll say this, the city needs money. There's one way to get it, okay? The neighbors need to be protected, that's another way to get it. I care about what my home looks like, I care that the value of my property has dropped because of people that own this property don't care anything about my property or my neighbor's property. They don't even live on the street, some of them don't even live in the county, so they just walk away from it, and we do nothing. And it's not just on our street, folks, it's all over the city, and I think we should do something to clean it up, and I think I've given you enough information where if you dig into it, we have an attorney here, Jeff, if he would like to speak something on it, I'd love to hear what he has to say about it, that we can have these people either tear these houses down or remodel them and take care of our safety problems. Thank you.
Very, uh, very eloquently done, Jim, thank you, uh, is there any, uh...
Well, we know we got a problem, and I think there's a person on here that wants it cleaned up, we, we've been over those pictures last year, we know it's, we know that it has to be.
We mentioned it once before about burnout and the other day.
Well, we had no meat in our offices, correct? I mean, it's not really any...
Essentially.
...there, but, uh, what was it, we talked about, the fine was fifty dollars, was the biggest fine we had on one of those...
The city's adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, and the procedure that's required is when there's, first of all, there has to be a determination by the city code official that there is a violation. I know Mr. Daniels has his opinion as to whether things are dangerous or whether they're unsanitary, but there has to be a determination by the code official that, that something is dangerous, unsafe, unsanitary, essentially presents, uh, a danger to public health and safety. When that determination's made, then the city has to give notice to the property owner of whatever problem it is, and give him the opportunity to correct the problem. And then if they don't, then the city can take further action, including, uh, fixing the problem and getting a lien against the property if it can be done. Uh, but, you know, this all, this is a, a lot of legal proceedings involved in that, they have a right to appeal, that's what becomes a costly proposition to do. I mean, it's not as simple as saying, "I don't like the way that house looks, we're gonna tear it down." You know, it's not that simple, you can't do that, there's a legal process, and, and it involves factual determinations on a lot of these things. Uh, some property owners may not agree that their property is, is not fit for habitation and, and would contest it, but it has to be done on a case-by-case basis, starting with the city code official making a determination as to whether some basis exists to proceed against that property and do what you can do.
I guess my concern is that, you know, and I hear what you're saying, and that makes sense, and Bob Stewart I see is back there, uh, I mean, since I've been on council, why has nothing been brought forward as saying, "Hey, this house," 'cause I, I could drive through, I mean, I drove through Bridge Street, and, uh, I could drive through a bunch of streets and find some houses that need to be worked on, so, I understand it's a costly, and, and obviously we have some, uh, money issues, but at least let's start this ball rolling, and, and at least start picking on some property owners. I mean, worse comes to worse, you know, I was, years ago, I was on the, we had a code enforcement committee or board.
Do we have one now?
We have one that exists, that has members?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't met in a while.
Well, okay.
There's a provision for a board of appeals, there should be a board for appeals.
There's one in Grayson's, right? I see, it's like some...
I don't know if there's one or not, but there, the, the maintenance code calls for a board of appeals.
So we need to make sure that the, the individuals on that code enforcement board are up to, as far as their appointed time period?
Right, so in case you give a notice and somebody disagrees with it, they can appeal the decision.
That's right, to the code enforcement, which is how it kinda worked, and, you know, they would come, and then, you know, they obviously have a next stage, which would be taken for, you know, legal system, but they obviously have some expense incurred there, and they're already, you know, not fixing their property, but it just doesn't make any sense to me that why we're not at least moving in that direction. I understand there's a cost, that if we go ahead and have to raise a building, that we're gonna have to send, you know, or hire contract out, equipment and dump trucks and haul it all off, but, you know, uh, I, I'd like to see us moving in that direction, 'cause we got a lot of properties that people are just, and, and he's right, I mean, that if, you know, it, it causes a, a hazard to the people in that area, not just the drop in property valuation, but a, a general health hazard.
I thought maybe if we could have ordinances with a little more meat to them that says, "This is exactly what you have to do." If we, of course, that takes time too, and that takes money too, I understand, not really very much money, but if we could meet, maybe in special meetings to try to get the ordinance to, so it, the board, the board would have more to work with, saying, "Here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna charge five hundred dollars, not that you're gonna get the money, I'm not saying that."
The, the cities, the cities pass...
But can you do that?
The ci, well, the cities pass this International Property Maintenance Code, and, and the thing about an ordinance dealing with, with somebody's property, you get into constitutional issues of taking, you know, so...
I'm not trying to...
Well, by then, that's what I'm saying, because it is people's property you're dealing with, you have to be concerned with, uh, the counter of, "Well, you're taking my property here," so that's why the city passes this International Property Maintenance Code, which has been determined to meet constitutional standards. It sets forth a procedure and gives people, uh, due process of law to deal with these type of complaints.
And the final step of that would be that the city would seize the property or...
Condemn it, condemn it, do what you have to do.
We have condemnation rights, so we could condemn it if they've met, uh, if they've waived their other appeals.
Right, and the determination for actually demolishing is that it's unfit for, for human habitation and presents a danger to the community.
Any question there?
I don't think there's...
So, I mean, that's, that's...
Is this about part of these, like, vehicles also?
This deals, this deals with, uh, this deals primarily with real property.
Real, I know, but, uh, but...
And there's, there's provisions in there, you know, you can't have junk cars and things, but there are some personal property, but it deals primarily with the prop, the real property type issues that Mr. Daniels was talking about. If, if there's a problem with, uh, the way a, a property's being maintained, then, so you can look at it and determination, but it depends on the determination.
Let me tell you what, let me tell you what we're gonna do, is, we'll start out with, with identifying, looking at the, the houses, asking Mr. Stewart, our code enforcement person, to, uh, to look at those properties and try to determine, were under the definition that we operate under, are they, are they unfit, uh...
Unsafe, dangerous.
Unsafe.
Unsafe, insecure type thing.
Yeah, unsanitary, uh...
And I would like to see, I mean, you know, I know, you know, Mr. Daniels is, is concerned about Bridge Street, and I would be if I was living next to that, 'cause I drove, like I said, I drove by, but I'd like to see if Mr. Stewart would give us a list of, you know, in order of, in order of, uh, worst offenders.
Mr. has already condemned one as unfit to living, uh, directly across from it, and that's been over a year ago, there's nothing still to be done with the house.
Okay. All right, fair enough. We'll try to compile that list and, uh, and, uh...
But then it should, it should be sent to the code enforcement board.
Try to get our code enforcement, uh, board up to snuff, and, uh, and have no problem with presenting publicly that, that list if, uh, if that would, uh...
Well, we couldn't.
No?
Could you all keep us up to date on what's going on with that thing?
Sure, be happy to.
On what you're ready to go, hit five hundred dollar fine, Jeff, what was that about? You know, on the heat?
That must...
Call it a five hundred dollar fine.
That was, and the ordinance on public nuisance?
It was up to, yeah...
I assume, I don't know why, I'll look at it.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I read it off the internet, under the Paintsville legislation, and it was up to five hundred dollars, you had to find the five hundred, but it was up to five hundred for each violation, and, and our home could have ten violations, okay? And I, I promise you, if we just enforce the law and find these people, these houses are gonna be cleaned up and tore down. I mean, nobody's gonna sit there and pay that kinda fine.
Well, that could more pay.
They won't, well, no.
They just won't pay.
I had gray water coming out of the sewer in the, the house I had one time, and I got a letter from FEMA, and EPA said, "They're gonna find me twenty-five thousand dollars a day, the next day I fix it, okay?"
Well, yeah, the threat's always there.
All right, well, we'll move, we'll move forward, we'll move forward.
That's what you're referring to there, Jeff, that we adopted that code enforcement thing? I was on council when we adopted that, and we had the same problem then that we've got now, pretty much to a certain extent. We were getting bombarded with people coming in with old cars, the property running down, but we adopted that, and I think that was at the time when we har, actually hired a code enforcement officer, I'm pretty sure. And, and it, and so that is, is that, that's national then, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's an International Property Maintenance Code, it's kinda like these, uh, like the building, uh, codes, you just adopt it, it's just a sta, international standard.
And it's already meant to stand to the law to you.
Right, constitutionality.
So this is an ongoing problem that's been going on a long time, so maybe we can start through something about it, not only just your problem, but all over town, like John says.
Okay, thank y'all very much, everybody. Okay, thank you all very much, everybody's opinions are valuable in this particular matter. Anything else that council would like to discuss?
Go for it. You go ahead, I'll depart.
I was just going to ask where we are on nine-one-one, I mean, we had said that we were going, I understand about this house bill that we are hoping to, maybe.
I have spoken to the judge, and I'm waiting on his response as far as a meeting is concerned, and they, I guess they have a meeting tonight.
Today.
Today, so hopefully they'll move forward in that area and let us know what.
We'll meet him any place, anytime.
All right. Good deal, what you got, sir?
I got a phone call Friday about the sidewalk. I told them that we had had a man come in, I think it was in December, and I, I got people waiting for that package, and I don't know, I think he just saw it or he took it.
I think I did take it.
But, of course, they wanted to know too about contacting that person. And I told them that we had approved to get these that are upheaved and raised. And I was just wanting to know how quickly that was going to be done.
It was done approximately, it was done approximately three to four weeks ago.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Okay, have you seen one on Third Street?
Well, that, no, we didn't do, we just did Main Street.
Okay.
That's on that grant, right?
Third Street is under the, under the grant, and that we've been wrestling with for about three or four years.
One hundred thousand dollar grant?
Hundred seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and we've been working dealings yet.
They are just about to approve for us to go to bid.
Very shortly, I mean, what would you say, maybe probably thirty days or so?
Yeah, it could be tomorrow, it could be two weeks, but finally, as far as we know. We've met all their conditions, and the documentation has been submitted, and hopefully by next meet, we hopefully can vote to go to bid at our next meeting.
Oh, that specs are a hundred and twenty pages.
Good, no, no.
Well, I would hope that message on.
You know, a lot of people ask that question about those stuff, what do we do? We never get to start.
Yeah, for your, for, it's most of Third Street, it's Elm Street both sides, it's Church Street both sides, and it's West Street.
West Street, well, and that's where people walk most, they're just so bad with it.
Starting to walk, and they're starting to act more quick.
Yeah, now they're asking more questions about. And then before I came in here, it was all about the swimming pool, which I didn't know anything about, about not being open on Sunday. Is that correct? I told them I did not know if that was correct or not.
Uh, I, you know, I believe that was correct last year, the crowds had gotten so small that we, that we just didn't open on Sunday. And we gave us one day a week to straighten out any issues we had and try to cut down on our losses a little bit.
The only thing is, is they said, we work during the week, and we can only, we come for proper kids off on Saturday, Sunday.
She said that's when they hosted most of the parties, like the private parties.
Yeah, we do have, we did have parties on.
I know, I know that, but the kids, you know, parents say, I can't take them during the week, but I can take them and drop them off on Saturday or Sunday. And I said, I would ask about that also. And I just wanted to know if there's any possibility that some Sundays it would be open, because that was the only time I had.
Have them contact the recreation departments, Scott Hale, and he'll, he'll try to talk to them and see if they can work out something that will work for both of them.
That's something to telephone all the time.
Anything else? If not, certainly we have some of our Carter Lane folks here this evening. The all, everything is in Atlanta with FEMA, as of last Tuesday, I believe. We're hopeful that within, possibly as early as within thirty days of last Tuesday, that we'll hear something back from them, and they, we're hopeful, and they were fairly encouraging, is that correct, Virginia?
I was told that everyone in the Atlanta office is aware of Carter Lane.
Dale's talked every.
What's the line I get, and it's like, do they go back to Frankfurt or?
Yeah, it comes back to Frankfurt, and they issue a contract with the city.
Oh, okay, so they don't have to read about the end for Atlanta then?
No.
Okay.
Well, he'll just have to accept the contract.
Okay.
You'll have to accept the contract from FEMA, like you have on your other projects.
Right. Okay.
Make a motion, do we adjourn?
Stand adjourned.